All right, good evening, everybody. This is the one and only time of year that I get to bang the gavel and feel as important as I feel right now. So, welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. I will call to order the Monday, June 3rd, meeting of the Rockport School Committee. Wow, that's such a powerful feeling right there. So, I'd like to just remind everybody that we are audio and video recording the meeting, and if you make comments tonight at any time during the public comment section, make sure you introduce yourself by name and address and come up to the table. So, the first thing the school committee needs to do tonight is they have to do a reorganization because we have new committee members, and we have to redefine our structure to move forward. So, I'm first going to start with the election of the chairperson, so I will entertain a motion to nominate someone for school committee chair.
Dr. Branco, I'd like to nominate Kathy Riley to be our school committee chairperson.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so we'll go right around the room, in favor?
The Reds, yes?
Altieri, yes?
Riley, yes?
Oaks, yes.
Delisi, yes.
Okay, that passes 5-0. I'm assuming your yes means you actually accept the nomination. I probably skipped that formal aspect, so thank you very much for accepting. And I happily hand you the gavel, and you can drop it over there. And so, at this point, Madam Chair, you can take a motion to elect a vice-chairperson.
I'd like to have a motion to, for nominees for vice-chair of the school committee.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Nicole Altieri to be our vice-chair for the school committee for the coming year.
Okay.
Nicole?
Okay. Okay, do we have a vote? Let's start with Mark.
Altieri, yes.
Riley, yes?
Oaks, yes.
Delisi, yes.
Let it be.
That passes?
If that passes, what, 5-0?
5-0.
5-0. I never got the sports thing right, scoring. Okay, great.
So, Madam Chair, in your drive, we will clearly not go through all of the documents, page by page, because we'll just make the assumption that you will all do your public diligence on this. But in your drive, you have a copy of the open-meeting guide from the state of Massachusetts, which apparently has not been updated since 2018, because it still says Attorney General Moore Healy on it. So, we will take a quick look at that and your own, so that you just make sure we're maintaining open-meeting law regulations, and that also includes the guidelines for executive session that we will follow throughout the school year.
Great. Now, are we moving down to?
I'm going to go right through 2, if that's okay with you, and then we'll take the motion. So, just to get this out, so 2D, this is right off of your school committee website, on the school district website. This is just a public reminder for ourselves and everybody, once a year, that you can contact Rockport School Committee in three ways: telephone numbers, as they are listed, post-mail, and the easiest way is by emailing directly to schoolcommittee@rpkt12.org. And know that there's a policy in place that strengthened our policy with electronic communications, so that comes in to the exact same place. It goes into correspondence, and that is, comes directly into the admin assistant, to the secretary for the school committee. She sees that in the inbox, she then puts it on the public record, and then you guys discuss it at the, at the meeting openly. So, this just kind of puts together the process for you through our school committee policy, and lets the community know that they can use the phone, good old-fashioned snail mail, and the school committee email box to get hold of all of you as they need. Also, off your website, just a reminder to the public and to the members, that you have many duties, but the three major duties: setting and maintaining policy, overseeing and approving the annual budget, acting as the employer for collective bargaining, and then hiring the superintendent and evaluating the superintendent. That second one, as most of you know, comes with a whole laundry list of factors that, you know, relates to the approval of the budget that you'll be involved in: curriculum review and adoption, and staffing, and direction, and planning, and all of that's good stuff. But this is just to remind everybody in the public the function of the school committee. So, I don't know, Madam Chair, that you need to do this tonight, I just think you guys have to figure this out, and then we'll do it formally at that August meeting, which is what I think we did last year and went pretty well. So, just a reminder that we have a litany of subcommittees. Some happen every single year, and some don't. We obviously have, we've never done a budget subcommittee, because we're so small that just becomes part of our practice. Policy subcommittee, we'll have two members, so we'll have to decide if we'd like those two members to continue the work. We're a little over halfway through. We'll do one more year of the policy book review, and so, my recommendation would be if those members are willing to stay on for the second year, that they stay on for the second year. We'll have a conversation with the principals and the wellness coordinator, curriculum coordinator, to talk about what we feel like that wellness can and can't look like. I know Ms. Altieri has been in and out of that kind of work in the district, so we should have, we should have a conversation before our August meeting to see what that looks like, particularly with the new Massachusetts standards changing last year. Be good to get ahead of where we are as a district, and you're going to hear some of that tonight as well. A liaison who serves on each of the school councils.
Nope.
I thought that changed.
Thank you. Good call, thank you. That did change. Board of Selectmen Liaison, Board of Health Liaison, and you can discuss the FinCom, and we will have a need for negotiations, because we'll be negotiating with RESA.
Right.
And I will start to work with their president before the end of this year, actually, to see if I can come up with a pretty aggressive timeline, so that we don't find ourselves in the same situation that we were in this year, where we're trying to negotiate a contract and build a budget, and have those things sort of up against each other, which is difficult for the community. So, we'll see if we can kind of do that a little earlier in the process next year. So, we'll have you guys have a conversation about all of these subcommittees, and then we'll kind of formalize that at the August meeting.
Quick question about that.
Yes.
I have an idea for one or two other subcommittees. Shall we discuss that at the August meeting? Do you think that'd be more appropriate than?
Or at the retreat, because if we, I know we're trying to nail down our dates for that July retreat, so we could do a little bit of business, preferably not a ton, right? But we could do a little bit of business that preps us for that August meeting, at that retreat, if that works for everybody.
It does, yeah.
And we'll look at our policies as well, to see what the process is for adding and subtracting subcommittees, because I know, I know that there's MGL statute, and then there's a process that every school committee should follow. So, I'll do the legwork to figure out the process before then.
Okay.
So, I think we can move to 10B, if you'd like.
Okay, so we're going to jump down to new business tonight, and first we'll go to 10D. 10D is review?
Nope, B, sorry.
B, okay, great, good, even better. Review and approval of service immersion trip to NPH in the DR. Who would like to speak?
So, come on up. Yep?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Come on up, guys. And if you want to bring chairs up with you, you can do that. If you want to stand behind each other, you can do that.
I have one for sitting usually, but.
You have to, yeah.
I'm Martha Cox Stavros.
You push the green button.
You press that button.
I'm Martha Cox. I'm Martha Cox Stavros, and I teach 8th grade Spanish, which is Spanish 1. Next year, I'll be teaching 7th and 8th. But this will be my sixth trip to this home in the DR, fifth with Rockport Kids. My first one was in 2015 with a group at Glen Hurcart. I taught previously. In addition to that, I lived in Spain for almost four years, and spent five seasons in educational travel, leading groups there, but I was the guide that met the groups at the airport, and put them all on the bus together, and led them around. So, I have a lot of experience with student travel. I'm still recovering from last week's DC trip with the 8th grade. Kidding, it was great fun, great fun. It was so nice to interact with the kids in a different setting, because they're pretty fatigued from MCAS at this point.
Yeah.
Now, they have their fourth one tomorrow. Anyway, so this is the same trip that I've done with Rockport four times now, five times total. I'm looking up there, because the map just shows where the home is located, and the home is called NPH, which means?
Bill, our prep.
Oh, I'm too far away now.
Nuestros pequeños hermanos, which means?
Someone come up. Come on, they don't want to just hear my voice, it's so boring. Come on. Aquilino, siéntate. Nuestros pequeños hermanos. Nuestros pequeños hermanos.
Our little brothers and sisters.
And the org-
Oops.
Oh, oh, you can go on and off, all right. The organization was founded 60-some-odd years ago, and operates 10 homes in nine Latin American countries. So, it's very different from your typical educational travel program, where the French teacher takes a group to Paris and Dexan Provence, or, you know, an English teacher takes folk, kids to London, and they see something at the Globe Theater. We don't do, most of our itinerary has nothing to do with monuments, cathedrals, and that sort of thing. We spend our week on the grounds of the home. It is a walled campus, and within the campus, it includes, they have 24-hour, seven days a week, security. This is mostly the spiel I give to the parents, I don't know if you're, because I want them to have a sense of, of security. But we, in the mornings, we do work duty, basically. We volunteer for whatever jobs they need us to do. Built into our price, we usually include a little chunk of money to donate toward a specific project. In 2020, we did a huge project, it was my largest group yet, with 35 people, and we planted, prepared and planted a passion fruit grove, so that they had passion fruit for several years to feed the kids there, and they also brought some to market, so it generated about $25,000 for the home. They also have vocational workshops, recreation facilities, a special needs house, their own school that educates kids K through 12, not just the children at the home, but also some children from the community come in for the school day. And they also have their church and a clinic. So, what else do we need to know? Well, these are some of our daily activities. Could I have the returning travelers discuss? Do you want my seat?
It's okay.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
All right, so why don't you tell about?
Thanks. I'm Rumi Coram. And, do we talk about the activity?
Wait, can you, can you see that? Oh, you're all seen on your-
Yeah, we can see it down there.
Oh, okay, fabulous. Sorry.
Okay, well, we have really nice accommodations at the home. We have like our own house, that's like a visitor house that they have there, and during the day, we usually do community service, like in the morning, where we do like our project, and then we come back, and we have lunch, and we get like some rest time, where we like play games and stuff, and then we get to go actually like interact with the children there, and it's really nice, we like go out into their, like, they have like playgrounds and sports fields that we can like spend time with them there. And Senora is, like, does a really great thing. She has us all like journal our trip, so we have like memories to do and of every day. And, yeah, that's what the days are like there, it's really nice.
Do you want to talk about excursions?
On the days that we're not working, we'll go out into excursions. Some of them include sugarcane tasting and harvesting at a sugarcane plantation, where we go out there, and the tour guide, or the guide who's from the school that's been bringing us around, will have us taste sugarcane, and we'll learn about the whole economy around sugarcane harvesting. Another one is where we go into Santo Domingo, and we go and see the House of Christopher Columbus, and we learn a lot about the history of the whole city, and more about the Dominican Republic.
Oh, the beach, under the beach.
We also go to the beach. We get like a beach day, where we bring some of the pecanias with us, and it's really pretty, and the water's really blue.
So, can you tell us when you're going, how many students you think might be going, the curricular ties, that kind of stuff?
Curricular ties, first and foremost, linguistic. They all have to use their Spanish, and many students will say, "Oh, but I'm not sure I have enough Spanish." What, oh, should I have one of you talk about this? Like, what did you learn about how much Spanish you need to go there?
What like you learn there? Like, the kids will like teach you, and it's like really easy to communicate.
Yes, it's, they find it very easy to communicate, because it's all play-based, and the kids there are very open and friendly, they'll come right up and take your hand and walk around, so just the cultural comparisons, and seeing another world very different from ours. And what I, a lot of people think that we're going down there, "Oh, we're going to do all this service," and, but what I try to stress with the students before we even depart, that they get a lot of volunteers, they don't need us, they appreciate that we come down and help out, but really, we receive a lot more from them than they get from us. And I even get choked up thinking about this. Oh, this is on the record, isn't it?
How many students do you think?
It's, so, my last group was about 30 students, and that was the largest. We filled the visitor house. So, I have a list of 53 that are interested. 53 can't all go, nor will they go. However, I did secure a really good cost for the flight, so the whole trip is $2,000, which includes, and I think I put $2,250, because when I first looked at flights, it looked like higher flights. The flights that I'm looking at, though, we depart on a Saturday night, fly overnight, and then we fly back Monday overnight, so we would miss the Monday, Tuesday after vacation.
February?
February vacation, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't mention February. So, that's consistent with the last two trips, we've also missed two days of school, because the impact on the flight cost is hundreds of dollars per student, so.
So, I'll, so why don't I open it up?
How many chaperones would you typically take?
I take one per six, so six students to one chaperone typically.
All other teachers?
Sorry, I should say one, two, between six and, and eight students, depending on, it doesn't always round up.
Right.
The school committee in the past has required that I bring a male chaperone.
Right.
So, Nathan Cohen is seriously considering it, his Spanish is decent. For me, the far more important thing is that a chaperone can communicate in Spanish, because if there were an emergency, and I have to take a student to the hospital, I want someone back at the home that is comfortable communicating. And then I also have, my eldest daughter is going to finish her studies at UVM early in December, so she's considering coming with me in February. She'll be almost 22 at that point. By NPH rules, you can be a chaperone when you're 21 or over. And then, another former student who will be finishing her, she's a junior now in college, Madeline Christensen, Janesia's daughter. She was my student in 7th and 8th grade, and she'll be doing her practical teaching in a public school, so she'll have February break off, and she would like to come too. I have more volunteers for chaperones than spots, which is a good problem to have, I guess.
Any questions?
I, my questions are all technical, and forgive me if this is all taken care of in paperwork that we haven't seen, but I'm assuming that you have a conversation about trip insurance?
Oh, yes.
About what happens if somebody tests positive for COVID?
Yes.
Whether COVID is covered in your trip insurance? I'm the detail person, and so, I think the trip sounds wonderful. I bet you check every single I and dotted T, right? Do you need us to ask those tiny technical questions? Okay, thank you.
No, you don't, but you will, normally will give you the completed packet, like once we have the exact amount of kids and everything, there'll be a packet that I'll just kind of put into your drive sometime before the trip, that just supports it, so you'll know exactly how many kids, what the final cost of the trip was, the name of the company, all that kind of formal stuff. Right now, we're, we are looking for approval, you know, broad-based approval, so that you can put the trip forward and start to solidify those arrangements, and then once the package-
Exactly, because I can't, I mean, I have this list of 53 students who are interested just from word of mouth.
Right.
I can't, I have a meeting Wednesday evening with interested students to start putting down deposits, because I can't do that before I have approval.
My only other question is whether the school district has a preference for chaperones to be teachers, who will then miss instructional days with students, or whether you prefer chaperones not to be teachers for that very reason. Don't mean to put anybody on the spot.
I think we've had a balanced blend to answer that question. I think oftentimes, we hope that it's going to be staff members in general, not necessarily just faculty, but the staff members, one, they come with coverage as employees, two, they come with the unique understanding of who our students are, and three, they don't come with other types of, you know, programmatic concerns. However, that doesn't mean we're not open to, you know, a blend of staff members and volunteers, so I think that's what we've done on this trip. I think that's what we've done on a lot of trips in the past.
Yes, so, in the past, I've had, Stacy Twombly came with me once. Other than that, they have not been staff members, but they're people who have been there before, that I'm comfortable working with, that I know have the communicative skills in Spanish, because that is very important. We're not staying in four-star hotels and interacting with the tourism population.
I think that would be my only question, who the second chaperone is.
Yep.
Oh, and I'll, it's likely I need more than one other.
Right, I understand. I, I think I'm asking a question about whether there's another school district employee along with you, and I'll leave that to you.
Nathan Cohen is one.
Yes, okay, great. Yeah.
The only other, just so that the, the committee and the public here, this, from a medical standpoint, talk to us a little bit about medical coverage for-
Medical insurance is included.
Yeah.
So, whereas the music department has worked with a company called ACIS, which is the company I used to lead tours for when I lived in Spain, but we don't work with an educational travel company. I work directly with a local travel agent who books our flights, and directly with the organization that runs the homes. But they have hosted numerous visitor groups like this, and I've been there enough now that they count me as the NPH representative. So, that saves us money, because we don't have to cover the cost of one of their NPH representatives. So, but they are used to, the, the application packet is extensive. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, I'm looking to the parents, I-
Top notch.
Yeah, there's a lot of communication back and forth, they have to fill out, they have to have notarized pages saying that their child can travel without them, they have to get medical information, anyone 18 or over is quarried, even as a participant on the trip.
I'm assuming that, like, in the fall, we'll see that formal application-
Oh, yes, yeah.
And then we'll be able to give the big signature and everything. You just need preliminary approval tonight.
Yes, because I can't, I won't recruit students until I know that I have the approval of the school committee.
Okay, so, should we do a motion to take a vote to, okay, so.
To approve it as presented.
Okay, well, bear with me, everybody, Michael was a pro at this, and I am not, so. Can we have a motion to approve the trip as presented preliminarily, so that they can start communicating with the families?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, great. So, we are, we have, you have preliminary approval to go ahead?
I'm going to take a full vote.
Oh, we have to take a full vote, okay, thanks. Okay. Let's, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you again for persevering.
So, to clarify, with preliminary approval-
You're approved to go.
Okay.
You just have to finish the paperwork.
Okay, perfect, because-
I'll present the paperwork on your behalf to the school committee in August or September.
Wonderful, because students are prepared to put a deposit down as of Wednesday evening.
Yes, yes, exactly.
And since you're here, can I just thank you for your work with the 8th graders with the DC trip?
Oh.
You and all the other teachers.
Thank you.
That's just such an amazing undertaking, and for you and the other teachers to, to take, you know, your entire week to go with those kids, and-
I'm not gonna-
Make it a fun experience for them, and something to last in memory for 8th graders.
Thank you.
So, just really, a big thanks, really, really appreciate it.
You're very welcome, it was very fun for me, too. I believe very strongly in the value of travel, even if it's domestic. And, you know, this trip I take during my vacation, no, but I, and I tell the students, I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend my vacation and all of the dozens and dozens of hours prior to that, putting the trip to the, to the DR together, unless I found it tremendously fulfilling. So, to see them in action when they're out there with the kids, it's, I would go five times a year if I could.
Thank you. Thank you, students.
Thank you for giving up a beautiful beach night to come here, guys.
They'll get back in September.
Right?
There you go.
So, Madam Chair, if we can go to 10C, we'll bring up Principals Rose and Waterman, and they will, if I can find the right document.
Hello.
Hello.
This is the interesting part, come on.
So, I'll blow this up for everybody, too. So, what we did for you, we had had a conversation, I think, at the very last school committee meeting, about trying to make some more authentic updates throughout the course of the school year next year. Now that we hopefully have gotten over the hurdle of the planning and development, we're sort of in the action phase now of moving the district forward a little more than we, I feel like we were in the first year and a half or so. So, what we did for you for tonight was Principals put together, right in the format of the SDI, that's why you'll follow the highlights right through, they put together a short narrative under each section, connected to each of our strategic priorities, and so, I'm just going to scroll and have them each address their, their highlighted areas, and then, at our leadership team retreat in August, we're going to plan out what our school committee presentations will look like, so it's not just sort of like a, a formative and assumptive response at the beginning and the end of the year, but we'll build in some really authentic, integrated, three, four, five times a year sessions, where we can dive deep either into the curriculum or the social-emotional components of some of this work. So, I will turn it over to the Principals and let you guys take over.
Here we go. Kathy, congratulations on your new role, you're doing awesome.
Thank you, thank you.
And just welcome, we're really excited to have you onboard, and you're among very good company here, so I think you'll enjoy it. Mark, do you want us to read through everything else, or just the, the update?
No, I think just the updates, so what I'll do is I'll just highlight where we are, so this is under our first strategic objective, growth and achievement. The first priority was around effectively integrating data and instruction to ensure that all students thrive, and as you see the document, if you recall, we have our outcomes on the right, driven by the output, and so, if you want to just take over the priorities in this short response here.
So, I'll start with the elementary school, and then Amy will share her updates for middle and high school for each priority. We formed an MTSS steering committee, which has met once a month since January, to discuss teacher feedback that we sought previous months, conducted a self-assessment on the materials we have at school, really just to check our readiness in having, moving forward with MTSS in terms of screening, progress monitoring, and database decision-making. The committee decided to roll out literacy first in the fall of 2024, and then move into also math in hopefully the winter of 2025. We made a conscious decision to slow down the development of MTSS due to a new reading curriculum that we implemented this year, and a lot of professional development opportunities that were offered throughout the year, and our teachers, we could tell, were feeling a little bit overwhelmed, and really wanted to focus on understanding the new curriculum and being able to teach the students well. So, we kind of slowed back a little bit. The teachers basically said, you know, they feel it will go better if we can give them a little bit more time and have a slower roll, and we listened, and we're happy to do that. For the data warehouse, we're reviewing final options, and I think Mark and I and Amy Rose and Jody Goodhe will meet and choose one of the two final ones that were chosen by the end of June.
So, I will just say, I think you are all aware, when we presented this plan back in the fall, we were still a middle and a high school, so some of these priorities were developed not necessarily together, but many of them do align, and so, hopefully next year, when we're able to streamline, we'll do it more middle-high school, because I think the greatest gift that has come from this year is being able to really think about that alignment, 6 through 12, a little bit more strategically from my end, which has been really helpful, and I think will be helpful within all these priorities moving forward. In terms of our priorities, where we're at, we've been very fortunate this year to have a new school psychologist who has always been 6 through 12. We did revamp our IST process back probably five years ago now through the ECLC grant, which involved Bridget O'Connell, who is obviously very much involved in that at the elementary school, and so, we have a lot of structures in place that are K through 12, but using them with fidelity, 6 through 12 even, has been a struggle historically. So, this year, our new school psychologist has been amazing. He has run both teams, and really worked to streamline and structure the processes across grade levels, also really making some fine-tuned adjustments to just some of the forms, some of the processes, as he's used them, make them more user-friendly for teachers, and just make them more meaningful in supporting our students, and we're excited about making that even better next year, and then bringing in the elementary school with that communication piece, just to make sure that we're aligning it K through 12.
So, I think what's important before we jump off of this one is the connection between the data warehouse conversations, the progress monitoring conversations, and now the instructional support team conversation, that we're really trying to take a district that has been data-driven, but data-driven in pockets and in components, and in various practices, and in various, So I think what's important before we jump off of this one is the connection between the data warehouse conversations, the progress monitoring conversations, and now the instructional support team conversation, that we're really trying to take a district that has been data-driven, but data-driven in pockets and in components and in various practices and in various, dare I say warehousing or repository techniques, I guess is the best way I can come up with it. So the hope is over the time of the planning this year and all of next year, we'll be able to get to a place where we're really looking at students K to 12. And we kind of have this dream of sort of a data portfolio that will follow the child so that the whole district has access to that. And if you're a 10th grader and 11th grade science teacher, you can really go in there and you can look Mark Branko up by name over time. And if I've been in the district for seven, eight, nine, 10 years, you'll be able to see the progress or you'll be able to see where the kids struggle, where the kids' strengths and weaknesses are. And that really should inform instruction, relationship building. And I feel like we have so many pockets and little components of this that I'm focusing on this for a period of time and, you know, kind of putting our money where our mouth is is really going to be helpful in the long term, so.
And just to add, I'm sorry, it made me think, I should have also said, the new six through 12 schedule next year is really going to allow for more strategic interventions to take place in all schools, six through, well, six through 12. We didn't have win or advisory at all in the middle school this year. And we had U block, which we use a bit as win in the high school, but we really are going to be structuring that. We're going to have acceleration special at six through 12 in both literacy and math. And so really looking at those, that data and being able to be strategic with the planning of it will really help those IST teams because the school psychologist has done an amazing job at leading them. The problem has been sometimes is what are those tier-two supports? Especially at the high school when there's really not built-in time or even people to kind of do those things. So special ed becomes almost the only game in town when we're trying to help students. So I'm excited because not only do I think we'll have the process down, but I think we'll have a better means to get the student's support in short-term intervals in a really strategic way with our new schedule, so.
I was going to ask, so a big component of all of this is that data-based decision-making, right? And going back to what you just said, you said something, like the dream was to have it all warehoused in one spot. So right now, or starting more, I guess, next year when you're rolling this out more and more, is there a warehouse of all that data? Or is that?
So that's what Amy just told us, that we've narrowed it down to two products. We'll be doing that work over the summer.
Right.
And then you'll, what you'll hear in either.
That's what, I wasn't sure. So that's finalized, like that's?
We have it down to two. So we're going to meet and choose our final one and then start to.
School year start with that. And that'll include like all, like, internal, like benchmarks, common assessments, MCAS, everything.
Anything you want to know.
Everything, yeah. That's a lot of information, which would be amazing to be able to use that. It would be fabulous.
Yes, to have it all in one location.
And we've had conversations just as recently as today in your office, actually, that many educators are not trained up, so to speak, in disseminating the data and data analysis. What they're trained up in is development of curriculum and assessment and adjusting instructional practices. So this MTSS steering committee is really putting some work in who, you know, who along with Principals, the Director of Teaching and Learning, and our interventionists, who's going to be on that small team of people who are going to be analyzing the data and literally handing off the information in a grade-level team meeting, in a department meeting, or in a one-on-one with a teacher. So the teacher's valuable time is spent really making their adjustments, not drowning in the amount of information we potentially could have on children over time. And I think that's an important distinction, is we want to use the data smarter.
That was one of my follow-up questions, is this data warehouse, is it doing, can it analyze any of the data? Or is it somebody in the Rockport Public Schools doing it? Yeah. Thank you.
Myself. Strategic objective two is impactful professional practice.
All right. So the RAS staff has participated in more discussions, team meetings, random meetings in my office around restorative practices. And the staff has done an incredible job of really implementing restorative circles in their class time. So the number of students being sent to the office for behavioral issues is very few because the teachers are taking the time to, not that they weren't before, but they're building stronger and better relationships with the students right away from the beginning and in a different way than we normally have. So the restorative practice is working, it's meaningful and successful, and it's leading to positive change. And I'm really proud of the staff and the kids for being so open and honest. I find there's a lot more honesty when I have meetings with students because they feel safe and they're used to talking about problems and issues that are going on. So I couldn't be happier with how the restorative practices are working at our school. The staff throughout the year has participated in several opportunities for PD around enhancing classroom setting and practices so that every student feels safe and happy and included in the classroom, no matter what their background is, where they're from. We have a lot of varying needs family-wise at school and I think so far it's, what the teachers, they're really buying into this and deepening their sense of belonging for the students in the classroom. Two staff members at RAS and the leadership team participated in a valuation rubric for the teachers. Desi's enrolling this, I believe, in the fall. And a lot of it is focused around equity and inclusion and creating a sense of belonging in the classroom. So Principal, Vice Principal Jody Goodhe and I participated in this pilot along with two of our staff members. They attended online PD, participated in discussions. And the language we all felt that is coming out in the new rubric is going to help the evaluators evaluate more effectively and more pointedly so that we can provide even better feedback. So we're excited about that and grateful for the teachers that participated with us. And then the leadership team across all schools participated in training throughout the year to help us improve our evaluating systems with the teachers. And Mark had worked with us to set up some training through Rebus. And as much as I, I really had to listen and focus because I haven't been doing this for very long, I found it extremely valuable in this last round of evaluations. They were not easy, but I think I appreciated the feedback I was giving to the teachers and felt it was much more specific to them and it was just easier to write. So I'm grateful for those opportunities as well.
So I'll jump in. There's a lot of overlap, which is good because of our professional development plan. Some of the consistencies across schools was that the district leadership team had, I don't have this on, the district leadership team had work behind the scenes through our partnership with Deep Dr. Amante Jackson, but also just a focus in our DLT meetings to that equity mindset and just really creating opportunities for our students to thrive and how can we incorporate them routinely into faculty meetings, team times. I will say we kicked off the year fairly strong. We got a little bit lost this year with transition and just kind of structural building of a middle-high school in the middle of the year. So I'm really excited with what we're going to be able to lead into next year. And like Amy, very proud of the teachers for what they did with what they had. I think we had two really strong PD sessions at the beginning of the year with Northeastern at the high school level that really gave us an opportunity to explore some of our own biases, but more importantly, I think insecurities around talking about these important things with students and families and things that maybe we're not comfortable with. And how do we do that? And how do we create safe spaces? And so we've continued those conversations through faculty meetings. We've had a few great teacher-led PDs around trauma-informed practices and restorative practices and things that people really feel passionate about, which I think have been some of the best PDs that we've had because there have been peers getting up and saying, this works in my classroom. Or, you know, I wasn't really buying into the whole restorative thing, but I did it. And then, you know what, it changed the whole culture of my class. Or, you know, we have quite a few teachers who are experts, I would say, in the areas of UDL and inclusive practices. And some of the PDs that they've done have been some of the best that we've had. So it did link the professional development plan. I know we had had another meeting about that, but I think all of our staff really got a baseline of understanding. They know where we're headed. I will say, for them, they deserve and require even more attention to some of these things to really feel confident in them. But I feel like we've laid the groundwork this year. As Amy said, we also, as behind the scenes, which maybe the teachers don't always get to see, but there has been a lot of prep work on our end for making sure that we're evaluating in a consistent, fair, meaningful way so that teachers feel like they get something out of the experience. We've done at least, I would say, I think six is conservative because we had six three-hour sessions that we worked together with Rebus. And then we had the Desi pilot rubrics, which we also did with our staff at the middle and high school. And then we had times where the evaluators were cross-calibrating and they had really cool rubrics and things that you could fill out and watch sample lessons and then see if we were inconsistent with our feedback and how we could get better and just calibrate, which I found to be really helpful because I've been evaluating for a long time. But I also never know, you know, is what you see what I see? Are the teachers who have, especially now, I've been solely evaluating all the high school staff. And now that we have multiple people evaluating at the middle high school, I really want to make sure that teachers feel like, no matter who their evaluator is, they're getting consistent and meaningful feedback. So we've spent a lot of time on that. And as Amy said, I think the rubric is really going to lend itself to some really strong, clear, and meaningful feedback. So teachers feel like it's concrete enough that they know what they should do, where they're headed, and get some, some meaningful, important feedback from that work. So that was exciting.
One of the next steps we've talked about as a leadership team would be to do group walkthroughs. And we really have to have those conversations with, with teachers ahead of time to let them know that these are not for them, they're for us. So two, three, four of us, if you can, you know, I believe it or not, are coming into the room at the same time for the sole purpose of us calibrating feedback. And what our look fours are and what we consider to be a strong instructional move or, or great provisioning, good relationship building. And so an elementary principal getting into a high school classroom, a high school principal getting in an elementary classroom, the superintendent seeing everything from pre-K all the way to 12th grade math that he might not understand, right? That, that's a really important piece for all of us. So we're having those conversations about what will that look like as a second year to make sure that we consistently feel like it's less important who your evaluator is, it's more important that the team is looking for the same thing in high-quality instruction and relationship building. And admittedly, it's easier to do in a smaller district, right? We have two, literally two buildings, a leadership team of 10. You know, we're not talking about Worcester Public Schools with 150 schools and, you know, 80 administrators. So we are excited about that work.
I was going to say, we did that a bit this year, not as much as we want to, but even when you and Chris McGrath would come over and we would, you know, Amanda and I and Whitney would try to do it in pockets too, together. And they were the best conversations with, not only amongst ourselves, but looping in the teachers afterwards to get that team feedback. And in a lot of cases, really positive feedback for the teachers because they're doing amazing, amazing work. I think the best part of transitioning six through 12 has been walking into, you know, a sixth-grade class and seeing the skill that it takes to keep students, sixth graders, engaged and motivated. And then all of a sudden going into like an AP physics or calculus or a class where you're like, oh, my gosh, now the level is just, the dynamic and they're so different. And there really is so many, you know, skills across the levels that are impressive. And then I'll just say the last thing on this bullet was that we got, we were really good at it at the beginning of the year. We, we got less great at keeping up with it, although we still just did meet again last week. Bi-weekly meetings with the Principals where we just came together because we do meet bi-monthly as a district leadership team, but a lot of time in those meetings, it's sort of, it's like, okay, now I want Principals to calibrate and do this work. And so we, we have tried this year to make every other Friday time where we can come in and get work done. And also compare and say, what are you doing in your faculty meeting? We're going to try this. We had this article that worked. And I think that's been really helpful and like looking at evaluations together, if we have complex cases of really exemplary teachers or teachers who need support and how can we be making sure that we're giving really good and solid, meaningful feedback to everybody.
Yeah, I agree with, with Amy in terms of the Principals meetings. And there were times we had to cancel because of things happening in the school that needed our attention. But to be able to meet with the Principals and say, or even during the Rebus training, to share evaluations with each other and be like, what do you think of this? How can I word this differently? So I feel like a lot of our language is much more similar and we have similar look fours, which between that and some of the new language in the rubric, I found very helpful so far this year.
Is Rebus the system?
Bill Rebus happens to be the educator in New England who owns a very large educational consultant company.
I see, okay.
William Rebus.
And has he been contracted to design this state rubric? Or is he a consultant with us?
So there's two major players in Massachusetts. He's one of them who does a lot of PD across the Commonwealth. And so we contracted with Bill, who sent one of his, one of his employees over to work with us. And I do think what, I don't want to be lost on the committee or to the public, is when you hear talks, talks about calibration, Principals meetings, leadership team meetings, we talk about educators needing time to collaborate all the time. PLCs, common planning time, department meetings, staff meetings. Well, we need that too. Right? So, you know, if there's an expectation that all the other educators in the district are going to benefit from that collaborative time to calibrate their skills, no doubt, the leadership team really, really needs to do that, too. So it's been a really nice year to make sure that we've carved out purposeful time to do that work. And I think that the end result is, has been very positive moving forward. All right, I skipped the head for you. Or I will skip ahead for you.
Okay. Oh, do you want to talk more about this? We're in 2.2.
Yeah, thank you. I went backwards by accident. Yep.
All right. So at the elementary, our K to five teachers participated in professional development and coaching sessions from Keys to Literacy this year. And we are going to be working with them for the next two years. So we have the new HMH literacy program. And then Mark helped us connect with Keys to Literacy, who is coming in and helping us with our, for our teachers with high-quality instructional practices to use with the new curriculum. We've had wonderful feedback from the teachers and the PD sessions are, you know, a few hours at a time. So they give them a little bit of information, some new ideas to implement, and then they try them, and then they provide some feedback. So we've had a lot of positive feedback from the teachers who are enjoying that. And like I said, we'll continue with that for the next two school years. And we have a newly developed social-emotional learning activities. It's called CILA class. And the curriculum was developed throughout this year from for grades K to five. Then the program focuses on social-emotional competencies, healthy relationship, effective communication, problem-solving, just to name a few. And one of my favorites, Darlene's term is healthy risk-taking, which I love. Next year, we were trying to find a way to utilize some of the professionals we have in our building. And with us going down to two classrooms per grade, some of our specialists are going to have more time and they are highly skilled. They want to be around the kids more. So one way we are going to work with them is to incorporate fine arts into our wellness CILA block. So that's been a discussion that we've started most recently, but Darlene Trumbor and Erin Kniff and Larissa de Benedette, excuse me, they ran the CILA program this year. So they're fully on board to have some more partners and to create stronger relationships with the students. So that will be something that we start to build up over the summer and then continue to work on updating our curriculum and kind of fine-tuning it throughout next year. I haven't sought any parent feedback, but I've gotten some emails or I ran into one parent at the K-1 open house tonight who just said, please tell me CILA is coming back next year. You know, the kids really like it and the, the students seem to enjoy it, the staff who run it love it. And the teachers find that with the activities they're in, conversations they're having in CILA, it's just making it for even a more inclusive environment in the classroom. So there are lots of benefits to it. So I'm happy that we get to keep, keep moving forward with it.
So the middle and the high school are outlined separately on this document, but some of them are intertwined. So I can speak to, the first part of the middle school-specific plan was the refinement of the claims, evidence, and reasoning. And that was made in the fall with a goal of it being completed by June 2025. I will say that is definitely going to be something that we're continuing to work on and explore next year with everything else that happened with combining schools, the transition, the scheduling. I know that the coordinators, when they were here last presenting, had talked about that they didn't get quite as much time in their team times and in their department times to really focus on this because there were so many extra pressures put on them from the district. So that will be a focus of next year is giving them back some of that time to really focus on that. They have continued to do the work in the classrooms and it's amazing. Part of my goal will also be to streamline that language six through 12 because we're doing very similar things. And we actually ran a PD in April that was teacher-led. And we had Joanne Hildreth from the middle school and I think it was Denise Farazi from the high school, both doing really cool, awesome things. They called it different things, though. But it was very similar, but it was cool for the staff to be able to see, like, oh, wow, we are doing this across all grade levels, but we don't necessarily call it the same thing. So a part of next year, we'll be making sure that we're really honing in and using the same common language across grade levels so the students can start to see and hear and, you know, have those concepts reinforced across grade levels. So I would not say that that's, you know, at the end stages, but I think we are on par to continue that work into next year. A big focus of this year and headed into next year will be the continuation of the STEM curriculum and our partnership with Project Lead the Way. So this year, we had incorporated three high school classes in multiple sections. Next year, we're going to be adding an additional high school class and three middle school classes to the docket through the grant that we received. classes to the docket through the grant that we received. Thank you to Mark and to Jody Goodhue for writing that grant. Teachers are really excited and it will require another, you know, it's 40 hours, actually it's 80 hours, I think, per class.
It's an incredible amount of professional development that the teachers involved go through. And so I don't want that lost. It's not like we're just dropping a boxed curriculum place and it magically happens, right? We partner with this company, they send us a ton of resources, and the other teachers involved go through hours and hours of training to make sure they can implement this well and so that our kids get real-world technology experiences.
So between Eric Sabo, Bab Swanson, and Ali Favazza, they've all undergone quite a few hours of training and more to come. Ali will be doing her PD for her three classes over the summer. So we have, for the middle school, Project Lead the Way, Magic of Electrons, App Creators, and Science of Technology coming. And at the high school, we'll be adding Principles of Engineering, which is the second docket to the Intro to Engineering that we had this year. In addition, we're also looking to streamline our spaces and resources just to create more unified access to students and also just make it feel more important. Like right now, we have pockets of classrooms where things are happening, but not really departments, especially in STEM. We did make the, near where the music room is, that we had cleared that out last year and made two working spaces. But this year, we're going to be moving those spaces up to, about the library so that we can really make a media, tech, STEM resources. It's all connected to the library, so there'll be one tech lab, there'll be like a maker space hopefully eventually, and a 3D printing lab in between into middle school STEM space so that it'll all be connected and really the center hub of the school near the library. Where on the other side of it, we also have a lab. So we're really hoping that that makes it feel like we have a STEM space that is significant. It's not just pockets of places. And it also gives those teachers teams to feel like they're working on instead of working in isolation. Because right now, it's kind of like they're all, you know, they're down in the dungeon and sometimes they don't see each other for a little bit of time. And so really making those departments feel significant just space-wise, I think, is going to help as well. So we have, thank you, you know, huge thank you to Monte and Mike and Kirk and people who are going to be just in-house making these moves happen this summer for next year.
It also creates a massive opportunity for student cross-pollination, right? So you've got this six to 12 shared space with two different labs and a crossover lab and maker space in the middle. So you can see upperclassmen in the high-end classes, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in the introductory programs. You can actually, you know, I can already envision upperclassmen crossing over to be coaches and to see how the JV program is doing, so to speak. Or these kids walking literally just through one door into another door to see robots blowing things up or fighting each other next door. So we really, to, again, to just embrace this concept of six to 12 and community. And again, across the Commonwealth, you hear language like pathways, right? Big high schools, particularly big cities, are talking about curricular pathways for students earlier and often to talk about college and career readiness. It's difficult to do that in a school with 45, 55 kids per grade because those kids cross into multiple areas. So by creating kind of hub centers, you know, fine art centers, STEM centers, and as we kind of, it becomes iterant over the next couple of years, as we do that work that way, we feel like we're going to create these learning environments in academic domains which will really be healthy for kids. And some will live in one and others will cross in and out of two or three during their time here.
And not that this is related to this, but just so you know, the work that is strategically being done to create those hubs is not just with STEM. We are looking to, now that we don't have a middle school office next year, because we're all going to be up in the high, middle high school office, we are looking to have supports readily available for the middle school staff and students. So we're going to be taking that space and making that a counseling suite so that we can have a working space with a TA there to greet kids always and if they need to just do work, if they need a space, we'll have the middle school counselor there, we'll have the six through 12 adjustment counselor there, we'll have the school psychologist moving to be next door to Emery Luster, who's the team chair, to really create a cohesive team. So again, they're not working in silos, they're working collaboratively. And we're working very systemically to say, what are the structures behind who sees what when? So we're not all running around just putting out fires all day. We're being really proactive with how we are supporting kids and we're working with each other versus against each other and also creating that behavior. The Rise Room, which we had had this year, but really now that we've had a year under our belt, really figuring out how we can use it better, more effectively, and more purposefully. And then we're also going to be able to move Mr. Smoker, who has spent out in the greenhouse doing chorus, is so lovely, bring him down because we're moving the tech to be with the rest of the music department down in that same wing. So we really have a music hub so that as they cross-pollinate and they do jazz and they do orchestra and they do chorus, that they can just all work together and not have to be in silos. So that is separate from this, but it is all part of the plan to really create departments and support for all of our teachers as they work to support the kids.
So you heard a lot about curriculum, but you're also hearing about facilities. So if you do bump into Kirk, please give him a high five and a big thank you. We probably have the smallest maintenance department in Massachusetts for a public school district, but they work their tail off. And a big thanks to the town DPW because they do a large amount of the work in-house so that when people talk, hear us talking at town meeting or at these meetings about being fiscally conservative and fiscally responsible, I don't want them to then walk around and go, look, there's the superintendent's Taj Mahal and there's the STEM world that looks unbelievable. And I joked about, do you remember when Deval Patrick took over and the big controversy was around his $50,000 curtains, right? So we don't want to put ourselves, if you remember that far back, we don't want to put ourselves in...
No, I'm not getting this.
No, you're younger than I am. We don't want to put ourselves in that kind of a situation. And I think it's important to publicly thank that DPW and Kirk's team that they do so much of the work in-house. That's incredible. Had we not had that skill and that alignment with the town, we wouldn't have been able to move some of this stuff that fast. So thank you to everybody involved.
So if you scroll down to the high school, the only thing to add that was high school specific, but really is six through 12, is the health and physical education curriculum. So again, we had turnover, we had a brand-new health teacher at the start of this past year, but we had a new health teacher in November because she resigned in November. So again, there has been some newness. So this year has really been about just getting him acclimated, starting to work with Darlene and Erin in the wellness department. And so next year, the focus will really be taking those frameworks and seeing how we can purposefully implement them, K through 12 really, but certainly six through 12 with a teacher, one teacher that we have.
And you've spoken on this before when we presented the middle high school schedule, but the new schedule is actually much more accommodating to us trying to meet the requirements and the expectations of students taking health and wellness courses in all four years at the high school level. So that is going to be a shift, a scheduling shift, but our new schedule finally provides a mechanism where that's going to be possible. And that'll take a couple of years for us to align our curriculum, align our scheduling, and make sure that we can, we can make that happen for our students. But that's, you know, all of these kind of changes come together to make, to make this all work. All right, priority 3.1.
All right, this is a very short one for the elementary school, but because of the staff changings at our school, we're going to, I'm going to work closely with Jody Goodhue this summer. She has agreed to, even in her new role, help me create a schedule for the elementary school next year. So we will have to make some changes and some minor edits. But next year, I would like to review the master schedule with a committee that I will head and see where we can make some more changes, better changes to maximize time on learning, really utilize all the professional staff we have in our school as well. So...
So really, just to remind ourselves of where we were at the start of the school year when we presented this work, instead of getting ahead of ourselves and discussing length of school day, which becomes a daunting and possibly slow-moving process that takes, like getting on a train to nowhere sometimes, we really feel like we actually have to dig into the current schedule and, which is what we just did here at the middle high school, make sure we are maximizing every minute of every day within the current structures we have. And once we've done that work, then we want to live in that new change, just like we're going to live in the new change at the middle high school, before we make some kind of decision around length of day or school time starts and endings and that kind of work. I think we owe it to ourselves to make sure we do at the elementary school what we did at the high school and the middle school first. So we're sort of going to slow that roll and do some really good thinking on this next year. I'm excited to watch that come to fruition.
And I will make this update fairly brief as well because I know you're aware that we did have a six-through-12 scheduling committee that met throughout the fall and the winter, did some amazing work, and were able to come out with a brand-new master schedule, six-through-12, which will be amazing as someone trying to work between four different schedules right now with six having a difference than seven than eight. And high school, I know at least Connie Lucido, who's my administrative assistant and tries to get subs every day, she's going to be happy. But I also think it's going to be great for the opportunities that we can give to teachers and kids, especially bringing in things like assembly advisory and when routinely, that we can really hit and hone in on those important social-emotional skills, but also the academics, targeted interventions. And I will say, I am very proud, so I will tote it, that both the middle and the high school schedules are done, teachers have their schedules, students have their schedules, well, high school students have their schedules, middle school students don't yet. So we have made great progress and it took a month and a half or so of doing these schedules behind the scenes to really make what the scheduling committee had done work, but they had built, they had built a great foundation and we were able to tweak ebb and flow, go back to the committee when we had to make minor tweaks, like this is going to work, but in theory, you know, we, this would make it so much better. And it was a wonderful process to do six through 12 because I joked with Whitney and Amanda, I don't know if we were still two schools, I think I would have built the whole high school schedule and then we would have realized, usually the middle school schedule's not built till the summer. Somebody who'd been building the middle school schedule would have realized that half of the things weren't going to work. And so when I went to build, we built the middle, the high school schedule first and then we went to build the middle school. And it was amazing because when we ran into issues, I could be like, ooh, I could change this in the high school and this would help the middle school, so let's do this together. We were really able to complement the work of all the needs and create a schedule that hopefully will work for everyone. Everybody has been really amazing as we've gone back to make different changes to make sure that the schedule best needs, the kids needs first.
I know we talked about this, we talked about this when we presented the schedule a couple of months back, but I think it bears repeating before we dive into the summer that, you know, I feel like in my two years, I say this is a tough year and I feel like next year, I'm just going to put that on repeat. You know, we just finished a year with really difficult budget build and proudly completing negotiations with the RTA, but all of that together is daunting and can be stressful for all of the players involved. The shining moment of collaboration, and there were a lot this year that you've heard about tonight, but at the six-to-12 level, this was it. This was fascinating to watch really high-end thinkers come together and purposely be selfish for a little while and then get out of each other's way and then get selfish again and then get out of each other's way. And I can't wait to see it. I've been involved in scheduling for so many years and I feel like this is legitimately a model process and potentially a model outcome. So I do think the people who were involved and the collective faculty and staff who weren't on that team, who really got out of the way and are trusting that group of 15 and, you know, and hoping that everything sort of ebbs and flows the way it should, that says a lot for who we are as a community. And, you know, we started the year talking about sense of belonging. We went through some really hard bumps in the middle of the year, but, you know, if it wasn't for that collaboration and sense of belonging, some of this big-picture work that our principals are talking about tonight would not have happened. So I do appreciate the collaborative nature that our district puts forward and all you have to do is open the Boston Globe or go online and Google something and you see that there's a lot of places where that's not the case. So I'm really proud of the work that we're all doing collectively for kids.
Yeah, and that was exemplified, well, at both levels, but there were some changes, not significant, but could have been fairly, seemingly significant changes that we wanted to make at the middle school to make things work with making sure students could get into all their UA classes and really have a comprehensive, robust program. And we went back to the team, we went back to the committee, but then we went back to the teams. And I will say, I was so impressed. They were just, you know, they were willing to give up certain amounts of core time to make UAs work, UA teachers were willing, and it was sort of a compromise, which doesn't always happen when you go into situations like that. And it really felt like a very team-driven process. So I'm excited to see how it is next year in action.
So 3.2 is our last one, I think, evaluating programming, looking at gaps and looking to make improvements to structures.
So at the elementary school, we've, as you know, incorporated HMH, so our new reading program. And we had asked the teachers to create a curriculum map and incorporate, basically what we asked them to do is figure out how you can utilize your resources and take the history and social sciences curriculum and kind of implement it with some of the reading selections for HMH. And it was a big task, but they all agreed it was awesome because some had been lower elementary-grade teachers years ago and they loved when they could have a unit. And as they progressed, they didn't always have a unit of study and, you know, so they were happy to get back to that. And the curriculum maps are amazing. They have taken hours upon hours of PLC time and after-school time. And I give a huge shout-out to the elementary school teachers who have poured so many hours into this because they are completely invested in the new reading program and they realize that by doing all this work, it makes their teaching easier and their planning easier when you can teach something in history, oh, but my gosh, I have all these resources that I'm using in HMH already, so let's do those units at the same time. So it's taken a lot of work and it's going to need some tweaking over the next year or two, but the teachers were happy to do the work and as I said, the curriculum maps look phenomenal. And the health and PE staff, they meet monthly, really, they meet almost every day, at least in my school, and then monthly with the other school. And they're continuing to unpack the new health and PE curriculum frameworks. So they've done, they've attended a lot of PD, they've had a lot of good conversations with Jody and I, and I know with Amy and the assistant principals over there. So they still have more work to do, but they've made a lot of progress this year and they'll continue their work on mapping out the curriculum this next school year.
The good news is, the good news is, is most of these bullets we've actually covered, so I won't bore you with too many more details. We talked a bit about it at the middle school, talking about really being more strategic with the DUSCIE acceleration model and getting in early and often with interventions. And so that is going to be addressed next year with the new win block. We also have the six-through-12 acceleration specialists in literacy and math, which will be working six-through-12. And obviously, since this is new to us, having that win block and having teachers teaching it, there will have to be professional development and resources allocated that into next year. And certainly with Jody and her new role in helping us really analyze and look at the data. So as Mark said, we're not relying on teacher time to sit there and be data analysis. Hopefully, we can have that data analyzed for them so that they can use it and be really strategic and they can just plan and do what they do best, which is teach the students what they need to learn versus sit there and analyze data for hours on end. So we're excited about that. And then just to round out the scheduling, as you know, every year, we do a comprehensive review of our program of studies at the high school level. We did that again this year, expanded partnerships in STEM, as I've talked about. We have revamped our business offerings to try to create a program out of them. We've always had business offerings, but really trying to be strategic with how we offer and promote and sell them. Tomorrow, our sophomores and juniors are going to be meeting with our internship coordinator, Eric Fent, about the new internship program and opportunities that are going to be different next year. So we're starting to kick that off tomorrow with the students and we'll build that into his schedule next year so that we can really create college and career, you know, open office hours beyond the guidance department, who is amazing and does so much for our students. But this will be another opportunity for them to get very specific career and college guidance and support, specifically around internships and getting out into the workforce. Also, the Flex Explore block is something I haven't really talked about yet because it's not fully flushed out, but I will say something I'm excited about is building in a Flex Explore block into the A block of the schedule. And I won't bore you with all the details of it, but essentially, the high school drops a block every day. And A block is consistent because we have shared staffing that needs to teach during that time, and so there's limitations with that. So when we marked off how much time A block would get versus the other blocks, it's significant. And so in order to try to keep alignment across all levels, we are going to be taking one A block a cycle and doing a Flex Explore where the specialist teachers, arts, art, music, ceramics, PE, health, tech, can do some exploratory. Very student-driven, very independent, almost like a 20-time project with our kids. I don't know if any of you have heard of 20-time, but sometimes we built it into freshman seminar, English, where students can take a passion project that they are really motivated to learn about. And obviously, it would be in the subject area of PE, health, with all standards aligned, take a project that they're really invested in, do some work around that, and have something to share and showcase at the end of a semester or a year. It gives, it can do two things. If you're a music student who really can't fit in art, PE, or health because you're taking five classes and you're in two music classes and you just want to explore something else, gives you an opportunity to do so. It also does give you the opportunity, if you are a music kid and you want to go down there and practice even more, you can do that. But the opportunity really is to try to get students one more opportunity to explore something of an enrichment-type value that they maybe wouldn't get in our schedule without taking out of that win time because we really want that win time to be dedicated towards strategically helping students in whatever area they need academics. towards strategically helping students in whatever area they need academic support in. It also, the added benefit is that it's going to give the high school teacher, core teachers, or English, math, science, social studies, and language teachers, I know that word, time once a cycle to work together, either within teams or departments, to strategically look at some of this data that we were talking about. There's no time at the, in the high school for them really to do that, unlike middle school where they do get team time every day, which is so valuable. So this is my, maybe not great effort, but much better than they've had, to have consistent time together to really focus on some of the things we're asking them to do. So we're hoping that all of those things will help to build more capacity for our teachers to do the things that we're asking them to do and give as much opportunity to the kids as possible.
Amy, could you say a little bit more about the win block in the middle school? So it's, it's a time when acceleration specialists can meet with students
Yes.
in whatever their needs are. What if there's stu-, so what will everyone, like, what does that kind of look like for everybody?
So it's still being a little bit hashed out, but the way that it works is we have a flex block, middle and high school, every single day. As part of that flex block, we'll have assembly at each grade level, which I and the assistant and Ms. King will run, along with counselors. We do that at the high school, something I value with the kids, so that will be one out of the six times the cycle. The other five days will be dedicated at the middle school to advisory and win. The high school, it's going to be mostly win, because we do a lot of the advisory work in assembly. But the middle school, there's so much small group stuff that they really can do. So every other day or certain days of the week will be dedicated, some to advisory and some to win. And win does not necessarily just have to be with the acceleration specialist. The way it would work is that the core, the teachers, English, math, science, and social studies, we would use the data that we have from ELA, from literacy and math, and create groups that could work with the ELA teacher and the math teacher in each group and then potentially have the social studies and the science teachers working on enrichment projects with the other students, projects that they could bring back to advisory and assembly and present. And that may ebb and flow, so it's not like if you're stuck in literacy, you're always stuck in literacy, it might be a short-term intervention. That, the whole, the whole win has, that's just one idea, one thought around the way we could do win and then we could use the acceleration specialist for really targeted interventions for students who need maybe more of the highest tier of support within that capacity. I've told the teachers, this is a work in progress, this is a new schedule and win and advisory were sort of the last things to be ironed out with all the other classes, so I'm actually meeting with teams this week to really talk about what it's going to look like specifically at the middle school level. So I don't want to say any of that is set in stone, but that's one idea for a model, but it would be something that the students are scheduled in and there's a different, it's not just a flex block, there is a difference between advisory, a curriculum that's going to be created through the counselors, myself, and the teachers, and win, which is going to be more targeted interventions for literacy and math and then exploratory sort of enrichment options for others who may not need that support.
And in a lot of cases, the kids, some of those kids tend to be the same that struggle in ELA and math. That's not always the case, but especially the way math is rolled out now, because it's so dependent upon literacy and reading skills and authentically applied to the world, that it's difficult for kids who struggle in literacy areas to navigate some of the mathematical stuff, particularly at the middle school level. So we've talked about what that could and couldn't look like and you, you could have, minimally, the team is identifying a certain percentage and number of students based on the data that struggle in those two areas. And the beautiful thing about having content teachers involved in the win block, as well as acceleration specialists, is you're kind of getting a twofer. You know, in the seventh grade, you have an English teacher and a math teacher who could take a certain amount of kids and they could be doing the acceleration, the support, and you still have the actual acceleration specialist who could take another subset of kids who are either lower or higher. And then if, if there's a small group of kids on grade level who don't need that intervention level of acceleration, the sky's the limit for what Amy and the staff can develop. What we've seen a lot of times in schools work is some kind of really good collaborative interdisciplinary project. It's one quarter or two per quarter, you know, you can have some kind of presentation at the end where they've pulled together two or three subject areas. And so that's the work that Amy's going to try to lead them through is what, particularly what happens to the students who aren't getting some kind of acceleration support, how are we moving the students who are already on or above grade level forward during that particular block of time? Because we have, you know, different levels of students to take care of. But to be fair, it is, you know, it is literally being built as we speak, so.
It's a work in progress, but we have a lot of great ideas and great people and structures to support it, so. And I'm very grateful to have the acceleration in literacy and math, not only for the middle school, I mean, I know the middle school will benefit from it, although the way we've structured win, I also know that we have amazing content teachers in math and ELA who will do great work in that. At the high school, though, and this person will be, these people are six through 12, we really don't have, there's, right now, we'll have, if we have students, say, fail an ELA MCAS or math MCAS, it's a graduation requirement, we don't have really anything to offer them beyond the grace and the goodness of our teachers who just dedicate their free time to helping and supporting them. So this is going to be huge to try to have us actually have a supportive person and a time to say, we're going to take this group and they're taking the retest in November and they're going to be working every win block from, you know, September through November on this. We've never had that before at the high school level. So that's going to be huge and then it'll be a really great resource for the teachers in the middle school as well in different ways.
So any other questions, thoughts, comments about everything you heard tonight?
I have, I have some comments. I, I am so impressed by what I just heard and what we've heard over the course of the year. I think it's really easy for people's eyes to glaze over when we have these conversations, because we start with an acronym, MTSS. And if you're unlucky, you can't remember even what that stands for, right? Multi-tiered System of Support. Pretty good, huh? But the work that you are doing is so technical and so complex, it requires so much vision. I'm not sure how much people appreciate the work that you too, and you also have to do in order to make this go. There's this old saying, if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there. And that is not what is happening here. It is so clear that you have a very clear picture of what you want things to look like. You might not get them there right away, but the, the pieces that you have put in place, from what the school psychologist does, to which data warehouse you choose, to how you create time for teachers to collaborate, you listened, you heard people come in and say, we need more time. The work that you've done at the secondary level to create a new schedule, the time that you've created for interventions, it's really remarkable. It's very hard work and I think it is easy to listen to this and maybe not, I mean, there's so many acronyms and it is so technical, but, but it is the right work. And I think it's easy when we listen to this to just hear, well, this is what the teachers are doing and this is what happens to teacher time and this is, this is how we arrange the teacher's schedule and, and I think, yeah. And for students, it means they get more time, they get a curriculum that's more aligned to what they really need. If they're not on track, if they're not on grade level, if they don't pass one of those high-stakes tests, they get another chance. It's a system that is set up with this intense focus on every single child. And it's very, very impressive and you have come to this meeting, I don't know how many times, and I have feared each time that we sit here like bubbleheads and we're like, uh-huh, 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 and you go home late in the wintertime, it's dark, you drive home, I don't, I mean, I just think, I want you to know, like, I, we hear this, it's really good work and I imagine you've spent an enormous amount of time doing this. And so I think it's great work and I appreciate your leadership of this work and I appreciate your, like, filling out these forms so that you can comply with all this stuff. I know how long this takes and I just think about students who get a second chance or a third chance, or who get a specialist, or who have a curriculum tailored to their social emotional needs, or who have a chance to take a STEM class, or to get into a maker space. That's really powerful for kids. So I think you are doing the right work and it sounds like you've had a great year and I really appreciate this update. I imagine we all do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to also thank you. I really appreciate you coming back at the end of the year, even though, like Amy said, you've been here probably feels like a thousand times. But I really love getting the updates, I like how this, how it's all laid out and how we can understand, like, I'm not an educator, I'm a social worker, and all of us have different backgrounds on the school committee, but I think it's important for us to really understand this, so then we can be talking about it in the community. So when people, we can help people understand how much is going into all the work that's being done in the schools, all the things that happen in the classroom, there's a lot of background work that nobody sees. So I, like, I think you put this in a way that we can all understand it, even the acronyms, you know, I just, can be tough, but I think, I really appreciate that, because then we can go out and share it with the community and let everybody know, you know, the great work that's, that's happening. So thank you so much.
Just want to add, there's no greater culminating experience than graduation week, which we're in the midst of right now and Amy doesn't necessarily get to see, although it is the culmination of her, you know, in elementary schools' work, middle school, high school, and when you see these kids, like, make it, I am such a sap and I am like the worst at crying for all of them, because they all have a different story and a different journey that we've invested in. And this morning kicked off senior week and it's just amazing to see it all come, like, all the efforts of this are that. So if anybody in the community is listening or not here, graduation this Friday, 5 o'clock, anybody can come and it is beautiful, these kids have worked so hard and so it's kind of what you're talking about, what we all do is for that.
Yeah, well, what Amy said, what Nicole said, I mean, what else can you say? But I'm always amazed by how much work that goes into these SDI goals, like, creating them and then implementing them. And I can't believe, like, it's so great to see the impact it's having on the staff as well as the students. It's a, thank you, thank you.
I feel like I should share really quick before we go, but this is my second full year as principal and I have loved it most days and I'm grateful that Mark came in the same time I did, I think, a year after. And his leadership and the leadership team, I don't, I'm trying not to get emotional, I can't even look at you, but I've worked with other leadership teams that I have loved and respected, but there's just something different about this group and I, I don't know if it's all the changes that we have gone through at the same time and the hard decisions we have had to make, but we've been in meetings where it's been very enjoyable, we've been in some where we're kind of arguing in a professional way to advocate for our students and for our staff and we always come to an agreement that everyone feels happy about for the most part. And it's, it's nice to be at the end of the year where the weather's nice and the kids are happy to come to school and the teachers are like, oh, thank God, there's only a few weeks left. But to, to now take the time to be here tonight and reflect on all the work that the leadership team has done collectively and at each school, it's, it's amazing. And I'm so grateful to the kids for all their hard work. I went to kindergarten and first grade, popped in at some of their open house times tonight and one student was there without the parents, so I was her significant other and it was just so exciting to see where she started the beginning of the year and all the amazing work she can do on her own right now. And I'm not even her parent and I got teary-eyed and she gave me a big hug and Rockport's just a really special place and I'm having a ball and I'm happy to work hard for the kids and the staff and the community every day, so.
Words, if that's all right with you.
Okay.
Because we definitely still have to do number three, so we want to do the approval of minutes.
Okay. Pull that up. There you go. Everybody have a chance to look through the minutes from May 1st, 2024?
Yes.
Okay, Amy, you were absent, so you won't vote on this. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 1st school committee meeting?
Second.
If I was absent, we should take my name off the minutes.
Cool.
She is noted as absent.
Nope, you are.
Was I absent?
I'm asking you.
It's also listed as present in the second line. And then it says absent.
Let's see where I was on May 1st.
No, you were here. Because that was our last meeting, where we went into executive session and we approved...
I think it was the previous one that Amy was...
Right, I was here for May 1st.
This needs to be amended.
So we got a scribner error there, so.
So this was from the approval of minutes from April 3rd, was that Amy was, Amy was absent that.
Oh, approval for the minutes for the 3rd, okay.
Right, but these are the minutes for the 1st and I, if you look at the top, I was there.
Yes, but it's just saying you were absent for the, you said you were absent for the roll call.
Right.
That was my mistake, because I was reading, the minutes actually showed on April 3rd that you were absent.
Then I was.
Yes. But you weren't absent on the May 1st, so you get to vote. So we have, we had a motion, it was seconded. Let's move to a vote to accept the minutes from May 1st.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And you don't vote.
Not yet.
Okay. Thanks.
All right.
Okay, we've accepted the, the minutes from May 1st, 2021. All right, thanks for bearing with me. Okay, next correspondence?
I don't know if we have public comment tonight. I don't, seeing nobody, not that I don't see anyone, but I see no one who wants to make a public comment, I think you're right, we can go right in there. So Madam Chair, in your inbox, you have an email regarding the activities of the Governor's Task Force on Child Sex Abuse from Ms. Seth Yora. I will not read it, as I know you've already read it, I just wanted to enter it into the record. And my recommendation is simply that it is taken under advisement and I recommend no action at this time, but it's important to recognize that we've received that email. We're aware of this community member's status on the Governor's Task Force and if the school department decides there needs to be any further communication or involvement, we'll come back to the committee and, and share that information with you all.
Thank you. First now, looks like we have none.
None. So we do have a lot of successes, but we don't have a student rep, because I think everybody's senior here is rolling out. So all I can tell you is, you know, as Principal Rose just said, we're going downhill for the next couple of weeks. I just keep the school district website on my phone with the calendar and I literally don't even look at my personal calendar anymore, I just scroll through the website every, and that's how I know what the next thing in my life is going to be. So if you would like to entertain yourself in, with any of our culminating activities, I encourage everybody to go to the website, click at the bottom of the calendar where it says "All," select "All" and you'll just get the laundry list of culminating events and activities, finishing up with graduation at the end of the week. So just, we, proud of all the work. We've had some sports teams make it into the tournament, I know baseball and softball took it on the chin a couple nights ago, but super, super proud of those kind of teams ma- even making it into the dance with a small school. And our fine arts students have been given some great performances in the past couple of weeks. Yes, we do have MCAS, believe it or not, still finishing up in different pockets at different grade levels, much due to dismay of some of those students who are just looking out the window, but we, we do have a little bit of schooling left to do and we are putting our heads down to get, to get to the end. We do not have a subcommittee update.
Okay.
We have no unfinished, nope.
No unfinished, okay. And then we do have donations?
We do. So we'd like to thank Sarah Patrick for donating a copy of the book, it's just my, one of my kids' favorite books when, when my son Ben was little, Captain Underpants Number Three, Number Three is a classic in the Captain Underpants saga.
Serious saga.
So if you have not read that and you want to read to young children and make them laugh, I encourage you to do so. And also to Lisa Whitley for donating three, three books to the, or to the library, Jack and the Three Bears at the library and See Inside Germs. So thank you, as always, to any of the community members who have stepped up and made donations to our school district.
Do you need a motion?
Oh, thank you for skipping right over that, that'd be nice.
What do we have there? Okay, do we, do we have a motion to accept the gifts as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Do we need to take a vote now? Okay, let's take a vote to accept all these, the donations.
I was just going to say, on my notes on the computer, there's another one for the music department.
On the violin.
It's not on this one. It's not on this one up there, but.
Here's that one.
A violin, a bass.
Well, let me get that one in after. I'm still working through donations on instruments. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep. Thank you. Yep.
Okay, so we have a vote to accept the donations as noted on the screen?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Finally, we have.
And there's a last-minute entry. We are trying to get all of our ESY programming set up for, in the school year. And so you have a job description that was slid in at the nth hour into your folder for Special Education Extended School Year Coordinator, who will report to the Director of Student Services. This person will, in essence, be the administrator, principal designated on site, so that we always have, it's, we're trying to tighten things up a little bit in our summer program, and we think it's really important that we have a point person who's solely responsible for the daily operations of that, as opposed to whoever happens to be the administrator around it that day. So this is going to help tighten up our accountability and our kind of processes for leadership in these programs. Salary is listed at the bottom, and it is fully grant-funded, so it will not hit our budget for FY '25. So I just need a motion to approve that job description.
So we have a motion to approve the job description as written?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Okay. Let's take, call for, call for a vote to approve the job description.
Aye.
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 Aye. There.
Thank you. We do not have finance report tonight, as we will not be able to do end of year until actual end of year. And we wish June good luck. June is having a surgery coming up, and she's prepping early in the morning, so, which is why she's not hanging with us tonight. So she will come out the other end well. Any discussion items you guys have?
Question about the summer retreat.
Yep.
I know there were some dates going out. Do we come up with any?
So Kathy sent me the dates that you all agreed to. I think we just have to check Jess's calendar.
I don't, I don't have Jessica's calendar.
So before you go home tonight, if you can check with Kathy. And I have two consultants kind of on hold. So if you can, if you guys can calibrate on calendars tonight, you'll get back to me sometime this week with three or four date options. As soon as I've locked that down, I'll communicate to the chair. And the hope is that we'll do one day, one really good retreat, and I'll talk with both consultants to get a better feel of the direction. But right now, really around team building, around goal-setting and action, and I'll work with the chair to, to facilitate where you all think the best use of your time would be, so that we can come together as a full team, including June, to get all that work done. I-
I appreciate.
I appreciate the meeting's schedule. Wednesday, June 4th, 2025, is our last meeting. Does that mean that graduation should be Friday, June 6th?
I'd have to look ahead to our schedule.
Okay. It's usually the first Friday in June, so.
Yep.
So yes.
Oh, so speaking of graduation.
Yeah.
So this Friday.
Yep.
We, in the past, have met at the school in the.
In the senior room, what used to be the senior room?
It's now John's office.
Somebody's office.
He'll let, he'll let us use this stuff.
Okay.
And what time would you like us?
Up to you guys.
Uh, graduation starts at 5:00?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Be 4:30.
4:30?
4:30 is probably fine.
I'm unable to attend graduation this year. My daughter's dance recital.
Okay.
It's a busy time of year.
So that evening, so.
No worries.
She's going to cast in her arm. I got to help her while.
You're going to be sad to miss graduation.
So if you want to just get me a head count, once I know how many people are coming, I'll be able to tell Principal Rose whether it's three, four members going, but.
Does, is everybody else think they go? Are you able to make it?
I can get a plus one.
Okay. Do you get a plus one? Yeah. Yeah, yes, you do get a plus one.
Caps and gowns, or, not the caps, but the gowns are.
So there are some in my office, and I'm guessing. So if you want to reach out to Amanda, don't reach out to Amanda, reach out to Connie at the high school. Just shoot Connie an email. I know there's two hanging in my office somewhere. I assume they were for people who ordered them.
Is there a way, just to check to make sure they're all there for us?
Yeah, call Connie.
We'll just pick them up that day.
Yeah, just give Connie a quick email. Yeah, that's fine. And the only other thing I think we probably should have done at the beginning, so I'm going to hold the temporary chair at fault for that, is we never even said, "Congratulations to Jess."
And thank you.
And "Thank you for stepping up and serving. Welcome to the committee. I've been watching your face. Just take it all in tonight. It is Fast and Furious tonight. Sometimes it's not. Sometimes it's worse." So, but we really, on behalf of the district, thank you, because, you know, as I said at our last meeting, some of us get paid to do this work, and then many of you volunteer to do this work. And the work is hard, but it's super important. So I personally, and the district, really appreciate having you step in. And it's always nice to have the new face and, and new opinions coming in.
I also think this is our last meeting of the year, right? Our last full meeting of the year. And I think we've had a really good year. I have, it has been my first year. I was sitting in this chair last year, and so I just really appreciate all the mentorship you all have given me and the warm welcome, and how many opportunities we've had to learn. It's been a great experience to be with all of you on the school committee, right? I just think we're blessed to be in such a good place with such a, a great team. And so I thank all of you for a great year. Yeah, thank you.
It's a real learning experience. Like, that's the best thing is, and you get a real appreciation for the work that the school does, the work all the staff and everybody does. It's, my kids are 23 and 19. Last one just graduated last year. We've been involved with the school for 20 years. And every year, I'm just more amazed, so.
We do not have a need for executive session, so we can get a motion to adjourn and-
So I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
All in favor.
What?
All in favor.
Okay. Like, I'm still getting this out.
Okay, we'll get you. Yep, all in favor.
All in favor? Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.